The United States of America into the Republic, where it is seen as one nation under God. And this whole would never be just a scroll.
Okay, first item on the agenda, it's the adoption and modification of the agenda. There is no modification of the agenda. I had entertained a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I would like to make an option to modify. The consent items eight point five through eight point nine to be for discussion.
Eight point five to eight point nine. You make an emotion to move those out?
Yes, please.
We have, um, we have a second.
What is, what are you talking about? Consent items, the consent agenda items eight point five through eight point nine. I'll second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor to move eight point five, eight point nine from the consent agenda. To new business, is that correct Karen?
Yes.
And it would be new business eleven point two, eleven point three, eleven point four. Do we need to mention that? In our motion? I'm just making sure we're clear. And so there's a motion and a second move eight point five to eight point nine to new business from consent agenda. Any further discussion? Okay, we need to vote manually.
Yes, all those, well, I'll just do a bubble call vote then. Stacia?
No.
Johanna?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Whitney?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Patrick?
No.
Five yes.
Five yes, two now, motion carries. Okay. So do we have a motion on the floor to approve? Or to modify, do we need to modify the consent agenda then? Do we need a separate motion to do that?
To modify consent agenda?
Or did we just modify it?
No, we have to vote on the modified agenda now.
All right. We have a motion to approve the modified consent agenda. For eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, eight point four. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda for those items.
So, Johanna?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Let me, let me change this, uh, motion in a second, little modified. Okay.
So we are actually voting to approve those items.
The modification.
This we're mod.
We're voting to, voting on the modified agenda, which consent includes eight point one to eight point four.
Okay, that's all we're voting on right now.
And we're not voting on consent right now, we're just voting on. Give me a minute, I will move those things right now.
Okay, sure, go right ahead. We have a minute. So now, we're gonna vote on. Modified consent agenda.
Correct.
Correct. We have a motion to approve the modified consent agenda.
Someone.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Oh, you know, I gotta stay in this one, yeah.
Oh.
So don't, yeah, so don't, yeah, yeah.
Whitney?
We both family.
Susan have to.
That's all.
So who wants to be the second then? Obviously.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second, everyone else vote except for us two abstentions, please. Please vote, treat.
It does, but it includes them all, it always does, it's weird.
Yeah.
We're, we're the whole consent agenda, so it's eight point one, three point four.
Yeah, it does that for some reason.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah. Okay, motion carries. Okay, next up. Communications, nine point one, comments from the audience, you know, we have none. Nine point two, superintendent update.
Yeah, we invite a student, she is a graduate. Abby Nichols was recognized as the KNC scholar athlete. This year she was also our salutatorian for twenty twenty four. She was very successful in speech and debate, national qualifier, had over a four point one GPA. Successful in track and field, made state, as well as was an all-conference and all-district volleyball player. She will be continuing her volleyball career at Amherst this fall. We are gonna invite her in August. Talking to one of her former teachers and coaches, Mr. Logan thinks he may be, she may not leave yet, so we'll invite her again, but I did wanna mention her. Usually comes out pretty late in the year and believe that she would deserve that recognition as the Smithville Classic twenty twenty four Scholar-Athlete, the KNC star. Right. The, the only other pieces is, I believe Denise PJ are gonna update on the Marzano Learning Conference, but we were able to take a group of leaders to go down to that conference and continue to learn and explore what KNC-based learning would look like and how we would adapt that here in Smithville School District. It is part of our strategic plan. Last year we did a lot of exploring within it and a lot of conversations. In November, we spoke with our administrative team during an admin retreat and our building leaders were adamant about this is the way we need to go in the future, so. That is a multi-year process, we'll have more information coming up, but we are doing that learning ourselves. So that way when our staff comes back, we can continue that conversation in August. The last three days, we also engaged in our administrator retreat. On Monday, Denise and Dr. and PJ led our building leaders and team members in an academic portion of that retreat. I believe in the future we'll look at moving that up to June, but with Dr. McGinnis joining July one, needed to take place in July this year. The last two days, we actually spent the morning out at the Litton Center. They have a conference room, a conference space that we were able to meet in and just did our kind of back-to-school management nuts and bolts reminder pieces. It was good to have all the administrative teams in the room, good to have those conversations, it was very engaging, so. Looking forward to see the work that they put in all throughout the summer and then the things that we talked about over the last couple of days. I want to continue to thank our maintenance, custodial and technology departments. They do so much work during the summer. You know, their biggest times to get work done is when students aren't here, so they are full force, full go, just wanna continue to thank them and give them the recognition they deserve during some really hot days on Monday and then also fighting any rain that comes up and adjusting, they've done a tremendous amount of work. Thank you, Ms. Norris.
Okay, great, that's info only. Next up, academic services.
Well, like Dr. Moss said, we took a team to the Marzano Learning Institute in St. Charles. It was a great opportunity for our administrative team to learn and grow together as we focus on high academic achievement for our students, and so it was an opportunity for us to learn as we get ready to go down the road of making sure we have a guaranteed viable curriculum, looking at teaching and learning standards, working through student agency and choice, shoring up our professional learning communities. It was just a great chance to brainstorm and learn together and make a plan to move forward as we look at pillar six on our strategic plan.
Yeah, and add on the addition of just some team building involving, we have some new administrators to the team and a shared experience like that goes a long way towards setting the foundation. She spoke to a lot of the nuts and bolts within competency-based learning, but really it brings extreme clarity to what kids are gonna learn. It's not a rewrite of a curriculum that makes the state standards that we already have in place crystal clear to kids, to parents, to teachers. And if kids know where they are and they're able to move, they then gain some agency in that work, and it's not the teacher doing school to them, you know, they can be part of that work as well. But getting our minds wrapped around what it is, what it looks like and how to make it happen is gonna be a push for a few years.
And wrapping up our academic retreat, we had our administrative team leave us like one-word feedback. It was so positive, they're excited, focused, motivated and eager to learn and grow, so that was great feedback for us as we're setting course for the year ahead.
Good. Any other questions? Next up, operations and safety.
All right, Mr. Saxton. Thank you. I wanna start with construction because we are knee-deep in finalizing seventeen and a half million dollars worth of construction. Transportation facility by far the biggest, most complex construction project. We're still on timeline, we're tracking. Our team's working on finishes and touch-ups, drywall, sheet rocking, all the electrical and then the IT infrastructure is currently going on this week. Owner occupancy still projected for August fifth. And we'll do our final punch-out with the architectural firm and contractor at that time, so barring no issues there, we're still, we're still tracking pretty good. As we move on down, thank you Randy for pulling that up, as we move on down the high school gymnasium, if you haven't had a chance to see it, it's getting really, really close. We're finalizing speakers, we're expecting some of our wall padding infrastructure and our logoing to happen towards the tail end of this week, early next week. And then our dance studio floors are being finalized this week and then we should start to cure and get those ready by the mid, the end of next week, so getting super close on that project. If we keep on going down and you can kinda see a picture of the dance studio, if we were to go look at it now, it's progressed past that point. Also, the locker rooms have already been painted and kinda touched up and refreshed. And then as we, as we look at the middle school and the, and the VAV installation for the middle school and the partitioning, the partitioning is done, it looks great. And we're fine, we're fine-tuning some of our cubic volume air and testing to make sure we're getting plenty of air volume out of our VAVs right now with Stanger. That's happening this week, but super close to being done out of that building. The playground, as you scrolled down, look at the playground over at Maple, it's, we're actually installing fence, you'll see a fence starting to be erected and show up and then we're on schedule to track and get everything laid down and then the equipment. The only thing that might be a delay is some of the painting for the sidewalk for the kiddos to actually have and striped out, but they're projecting to have all that wrapped up before school starts. Some of the projects that didn't show up on this list that I wanted to make sure we touched on was one, the middle school football field, as you guys are aware, is installed, it's operational, we're actually using it for practice now. But I wanted to bring to your attention the track. So we are having issues with the track in terms of firmness and being able to utilize in a safe way. That chat is actually, hasn't solidified and it's not firming up at all, so we actually have Jay Dunn, our, and our architect met last week and there's a compound mix agent they'd like to infuse into the chat material. They will start that process tomorrow. The conversations I have had with them is I'd like a guarantee past just a year that this process will actually work and we'll be able to use this track over time. And we're, we're pushing pretty hard on that aspect of it because it makes no sense to me to, uh, have the potential of a track degradating after a year of installation. Did that chat selection come from the contractor chat? So the material, in terms of the type of material, the spec did come from the architectural firm, the landscape architect. But Midwest and the Midwest America, the installation company used a different spec of that material, and that's some of the conversations that we're hashing out right now. Their recommendation is it would hold up better. So we're playing through a little bit of the pointing game of that piece of it, but they've been great partners in terms of helping us identify solutions and they're getting back in there, so we're testing a thirty by thirty foot strip to see if that works and then talk about the long-term viability of that solution. And so there'll be more to come for your August meeting on that piece of it as we dive a little deeper into it. The other piece that I wanted to make sure you were aware of was the HVAC Maple project that's starting to go underway. So that, that takes care of the gymnasium and the offices associated to that school, which has been some challenges for maintenance in the past. So we're looking to get that rectified and that's starting to, to be underway. The high school roof, the old cafeteria here, it's under repair, it's, I actually think they're done and wrapped up out of there, but we resaled and finished up that roof and retarded with our company. Uh, that's kind of a high-level construction, are there any questions before I move on to just general updates around operation?
Well, that, that practice room have mirrors, I'm assuming?
That's a good question, I don't know, Whitney, I'd have to check.
I think so.
The scope, I'll check. What the original scope was. Good question. Uh, anything else? So the other pieces, I wanna echo what Dr. Moss said. Right now is an incredibly busy period for our IT and maintenance partners and custodial staff. We're working to get every floor stripped, waxed, re-scrubbed, deep cleaned and school-ready by August one, so teachers could get back in there and set up their spaces. Those guys have been working tirelessly for that, so I wanna echo an appreciation to them as well. And then, as you're aware, our food service, uh, con, our, our food service operations, we are in transition of a new onsite director. So we're, we're establishing who that person is and they've been, they've been really good in transitioning me and helping me onboard to their processes, but no, no issues there. And the other piece is Durham Bus Company, this is the last big one. We just onboarded a new contractor for our bus services, which started July one. They are, they are in the midst of getting all their staff trained and Alyssa, who transitioned with, uh, from Diest to Durham just as fast, she's going through rounds and rounds of training. And we are ironing up all the details to how we get them fueled, to how we get students routed, to how we leverage all their new technology for the benefits of our family, so there'll be more to come on that. We're hoping to share quite a bit of that information in August.
Okay.
Questions on any of that? Okay.
Great, yeah. Good man, man, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, ten point one, general financial review.
The information's there, same review that we provide each month, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. Okay, there's no other questions. Next up is ten point two, board committees, but that is uh, the canceling of the finance committee meeting earlier and having the bond, uh, our financial advisors come in for workshops, so. Any com, any comments on that?
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
That stirred up a lot.
Yeah. Any other comments on the financial advisors? I know it was quite a lengthy meeting, so.
Very exciting, good things coming.
Yes, and like Dr. Wright explained, if we need to bring them back in, in the future, because it's a lot to digest what we went through today, so. If we do have questions later on, we need to bring them back in a couple of months or next year or whatever, so. Um, something for us to consider and they'll, they'll gladly do that, so. Okay, next up, any other questions on ten point two, sorry? Um, next up, eleven point one, Sellsier Springs Area Career Center Tuition Contract.
So we have a student, uh, who is interested in fire science, fire safety. Uh, our partnership with Northland Caps doesn't have that program, so we were creative and, uh, contacted Excelsior, we, we moved around, but landed with Excelsior, uh, and they have done this work before. So as far as cost, it's very similar to what, uh, Caps tuition would be. Uh, it's nearly apples to apples, except the student will have to drive a little bit further, so. Recommendation is to approve the contract and help this student explore their passion.
Well, I just wanna applaud the student for not being like, oh, it's not offered, I guess I can't do it, like, props to that student, uh, for taking the initiative and maybe paving a way that more students will follow, so absolutely.
It's fantastic. So do we have a motion on, uh, to approve the Excelsior Springs Area Career Center Tuition Contract?
So move.
We have a second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote. Okay, motion passes. Next up, I will call it eleven point two. Re-adopt Board Policy BBFA.
The Missouri Ethics Commission requires all boards in the state of Missouri to re-adopt policy BBFA every two years. As a practice, Smithville has decided to adopt that each year. It was part of our process last year and be happy to answer any questions. There are no changes based on MSBA recommendations to that policy.
That was my question, was there a cost or change?
Nope, no change. And we do try to highlight those and we call those out, I, if we do, we always try to call those out well in advance as well, I apologize for not including them.
Yeah, they will, they will put, um, it, highlight what the changes are and stuff, it's very helpful.
Great.
Green, I have red taken away.
You'll get to do it at least four times next year if MSBA is consistent.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? I have a motion on the floor to re-adopt Board Policy BBFA. So move. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Stacia, a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If none, please vote. Motion passes. Eleven point three, approval of FFA travel requests.
PJ would like, would you like me to take this since it's your first FFA travel request?
Yes.
Yeah. Each.
I'm glad it's early this year.
Yeah, yeah, see, Mr. V Brock was very early this year. Each year our students go to the National FFA Convention, they raise this money on their own to go to this national convention. Uh, Mr. V Brock is very diligent with their money and usually partners with one to two other school districts on transportation. Um, you can see here it's gonna be Richmond and Plattsburgh FFAs that we're partnering with. He takes those students down there. Last year, if you, for those of you that were on the board at the time, Mr. Moore attended as well and shared just the tremendous um, experience. For those that have been in Kansas City long enough, this convention used to be held in Kansas City and it was, uh, the blue coats all downtown, um, going through Bartle Hall. This year he looks at taking sixteen students. And again, it's something that they do each and every year, uh, would, happy to answer any question you have regarding this district.
I'll just say that it's an excellent opportunity. Um, I was, the very first year they moved it from Kansas City was my senior year, and so it was a big deal that we took a group to Louisville or Lovel, as I learned, it's supposed to be pronounced, um, and there, it's just an experience that you. It was awesome when it was in Kansas City, obviously, but it's just a great experience for FFA students. Um, and I'm glad that we've been able to continue to allow them to travel for that, because you can't beat it and it's something they'll carry with them forever.
I think my only question was I, and I missed the part where this was self-funded, because I was just gonna ask if we had other organizations or sports, would we give them two hundred dollar fund money and spend all this? Or is it gonna set a precedent, but I didn't, I missed the part that they self-funded, so that's perfect.
I think part of it is learning for me, I apologize that because it's a regular process, we take for granted. That, that all know, and please know also, any out-of-state travel we always bring to the board is our practice. Here, district.
And so one, one advisor, sixteen students, no other adults are going from our.
The, we wouldn't prevent.
The ratio.
Yeah, we wouldn't prevent anyone else from going and we work with that sponsor or advisor on their comfortable-ness with it. These students spend probably more hours than Mrs. V Brock with Mr. V Brock, honey, you know, during the school years certainly just as much time as they spend and and just so you are aware, our student, Asa Keldner, is actually a graduate, so to earn that degree, they're already a graduate from the district and they actually earn it, I believe, their freshman year of college. Is it?
We had two last year, yeah.
It's amazing.
It's a big deal.
It's great. Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
I just, was Miss Carlisle offering to be a sponsor?
Yeah.
It's back up. Um, all right, do I have a motion to approve the FFA travel request?
So moved.
I have a second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? If none, please vote. Motion passes. Next up, eleven point four, uh, approval of Innovation Learning Contract for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
I think you see a contract in a memo regarding innovation learning, which is our before and after school program. We have utilized it for several years, it is before and after at each elementary school, and this year we're gonna get to our full-day preschool program at Maple Elementary. We went through all of our state licensing, what actually they did on their end to make sure we have a space that fits code and surveyed our parents and looked at for the interest in this, so it's a good opportunity for our students, we've had good service with innovation learning wish to continue our partnership with them.
And one thing I learned yesterday in meeting with Stacia that we all ask is for, it still mentioned the Wednesday Late Start. In that contract, we obviously do not have Wednesday Late Start anymore, or did it get updated? Oh, very good.
It's already been corrected and added to the packet, so I already can hear that.
They were quick.
They were.
They're not always that quick when we get late.
Oh, it's been corrected.
Do we have any policies on RFPs when we review contracts? That was my question, was, not that we're not happy, they're doing a great job.
Yeah.
I was just curious, policy-wise, to make sure that we're doing whatever we need to do and make sure that we have an RFP out there if we're supposed to have, and that's the only thing.
Sure, so we, we do an RFP usually every three to five years on different products, like our food service just went through two years ago. Uh, we usually, if we sign a five-year agreement, we will have an opt-out clause after three. And in all honesty, we'll, we will both organizations write an opt-out clause every year, you just have to give ninety-day notice. Um, and anytime we have a new contract, because we don't have an attorney on site, we will send that first contract for our attorney to review as well. Or if there are changes, significant changes to the contract, we will have them do it. The example I would use that most recently that we really went back and forth was regarding our SROs and our partnership with the city of Smithville. Our, for lack of a better term, our lawyers kept going back and forth for the city and for us, in the verbiage of which they used. And Danny, that's, that's fair. And Danny, that's, that's fair when I say correct.
Any other questions from this one? All right, um do we have a motion to approve the Innovation Learning Contract as presented? We got a motion. And a second. Any other discussion? If not, please vote. Next up, eleven point five approval of contractual services agreements.
So I have several contractual agreements for our students and we have a great number of input with all of these um contractors and like we mentioned earlier, we do go through the RFP process. Um and so in the spring, I would be going for different RFPs for different contract um agreements. Uh and so we'll be coming to us um next spring after every five months. Um through that, but we do um have utilized these um contract services uh companies for several years, many years, some of them. And um they provide great services, uh great to work with. And so we're just asking for approval of these.
On the sped track, they noticed there, I don't think unless I must said that there was an expiration, do these normally expire?
So every year we put a new contract in for sped track. Okay, so that is every year that we vet out um our IP slash five of four um program system that we utilize.
Okay. I think the public clarification is always good, so that's why I asked for these.
Any other questions?
Any other? Okay, great. Do we have a motion to approve the contractual services agreements as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Did you get that Karen? Okay, any further discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes. Next up, eleven point six, um Personnel Report for July twenty twenty four.
We have before you our personnel recommendations for July. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Um I have, I, just one comment, just to make sure that we are prioritizing internal candidates. Um I know they're considered, we just want to make sure that we are prioritized because they're loyal to our district. And um that's the biggest thing. And also just, just for clarification. If we're asking for approval of personnel, does that mean that they're already working? Or they're supposed to be approved before they start?
Well, it depends. So all of our employees who um receive an actual contract, we ask for board approval prior to their start date if at all possible. If not, Dr. Moss will communicate with the board and make sure that the board is okay with that um prior to any start date. And an at-will employee, um it's not necessarily required um for board approval, but we do that um as part of our regular practice to bring um classified staff members to the board for approval. As a regular part of our process.
So the administrative assistant that started this on this report would not be required to be approved prior to starting?
She is a classified employee and so we have instances where we will um hire and start a custodian prior to board approval so that we can not only get them going on their job assignment. Uh if the board was to say that um they were not approved, then we would have to work through the process. So any contracted employee, if they have a legal binding contract, like our teacher contracts or our administrator contracts, they are brought to the board um for approval of that contract.
So what, and I'm not saying that we are, but what would it look like if we were to say no to somebody that people already started?
We would have to work through that process.
Which would look like what?
Well, we haven't had that situation occur. Um so we definitely would just have to have a conversation and I would give Dr. Moss and try to figure out what the best way to go about that would be.
Okay. Any other questions on the Personnel Report for July twenty twenty four? If not, do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report?
I, I do have a more question. Is the IA person that is being recommended for the online Spanish part of this approval or not yet?
No.
No.
If we talk about any employee specifically, we need to do that in executive session. Um but we don't have an IA a new higher IA for the high school on this report that you're.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report for July twenty twenty four? I got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, please vote. It passes. One extension. Right, great. Next up, oh.
Before we leave the personnel, last year, we had some classes, class sizes that were hitting our number and really close to going over. So we asked permission from the board that if we needed to look at hiring a teacher, our next board meeting is August twenty second. Well, after, it's actually the second day of school. Um asked permission, certainly with advanced notification to you guys, that if we get in that situation while we don't anticipate it, would we have, would our building leaders have the ability to go ahead and fill that teaching position if we needed to add an FTE based on our class size standards? It's not something that you guys necessarily approve, but I guess is there any concerns with that if we were to bring an FTE to you based on um class size?
No, I think small class sizes have been a important priority, so. Please do that. Please.
Falls in line with our objectives and priorities, so.
Yep, that is a priority of ours, so. Great question. Okay. Um next up, twelve point one. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Uh we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Anybody want to discuss adjournment meeting? If not, please vote.
Come on.
Motion passes, great.
Yeah, you are lucky, PJ.